With his powerful brainwaves cradled in the warmth of reasoning, it's time for Johnny Walker Dread to straighten you out on a thing or two. Emanating all the way from exciting Las Vegas, Oklahoma, it's the Johnny Walker Dread Show.
But nothing ever gets addressed through this body. Every issue gets swept under the rug until said issue comes to fruition. And then you make another resolution and make more broken promises. And it's just this repeated broken cycle. I'd really like to see more effort for community engagement and involvement. Because when you don't allow that, as you've all done for quite some time, the community doesn't trust you. You could work with the community instead of against it, but instead you have an us versus them mentality.
I don't think it's us versus them so much. It's them versus some of you. All right? And one thing that really bothers me the most about these city council meetings and people getting up there and getting on the microphone is when they claim that they're the voice of the people. You know, I'm sorry, you're one person who has an opinion. Share your opinion. Your opinion matters as much as anybody else's, unless you say something stupid to where nobody wants to listen to it anymore. All right? But don't get up there and tell us that you're the voice of the community and the community wants this and the community wants that. Sorry. You're probably in the minority.
But it's not a you versus us. Because it's all of us in this room that put you in your chair. Without the working class citizens of this city, you'd have nothing.
All those people in the room put them in those chairs? There's probably, what, 30 people in there? This is a town of maybe a couple hundred thousand? So, no, again, talk about yourself. Talk about how you feel. And most importantly, make sure that when you share your opinions, they carry weight, they're persuasive. Throwing out F bombs ain't gonna do it.
So when we go out and protest and disrupt that capitalism, you need to pay attention to that because we have the power to shut this whole city down. We don't have enough people and numbers yet, but we'll get there. And you know why we'll get there? Because you all are too arrogant to not push us there.
You don't have the power to shut the city down because you don't make any money. Those people in the room don't make enough money to be able to go by without the city's help. The people who can shut the city down are the rich people, not you. And the city council knows it. You can threaten all you want, you're not gonna shut the city down. All you can do is shut down some streets and stuff like that and get arrested.
I suggest that you stop maintaining the status quo and start building a relationship with your constituents because you don't want your entire city to stop spending their money here.
You don't have any money. You're broke. All of you people in there, with the exception, maybe a couple there, are broke. You're a tax drain. You're not a source of revenue.
If we could somehow take down the devotes, the police unions, and talk sense into all the bootlickers, we could shut this city down. Unfortunately, we have a lot of clowns standing in our way. Don't be a clown. Grow a spine, grow a pair, whatever. Stand up for what's right. Be progressive. Mayor Bliss, you ran on being progressive. What are you doing? I'd like to see one source where we can find information on the entire process.
I'll tell you what happened. She ran as a progressive and then she looked at the budget sheets. And that usually kills most progressivism. Oh, wait, all those ideas I had aren't fundable? Yeah, it happens. You think that you're gonna be able to go in there and we'll make a community where all the homeless are given the best homes. And we won't have police. People will just naturally get along. And then what happens? You get elected and all of a sudden, the budget is thrown in front of your face. And now you have realities. Ooh, ooh, wait a minute. I can't build those homeless shelters because I need money from taxes from that rich corporation that has a factory in my town? Oh my gosh. That's what happens. And so, yeah, I don't think that the mayor necessarily was being dishonest when she ran as a progressive. She was just naive. Now, I'm not cutting down progressive people. Maybe some of their ideas are really good. Maybe they would work very well. But when they're running as politicians, that often gets swept aside because they're trying to appeal to people like you who don't understand the realities of the situation. As an example, you build those great homeless shelters. And that sounds like a great progressive thing to do. But all of a sudden, the number of homeless in your town has increased from 1,000 to 5,000. Why? All the homeless from neighboring communities are now pouring in. And you never thought of that. And so, there are no simple solutions.
It's our right to know what's going on politically in our city because it affects each and every one of us. And we pay the taxes. The last thing I want to say is the tone policing is not a good look for the city of Grand Rapids.
Again, the F bombs. Every one of them just can't get off of it. Like, look, don't use F bombs. To them, not using an F bomb is like a lot of them not resisting the police. It's not a good idea. It undercuts your arguments. But you just have to do it anyway. And getting pulled over by the police, being asked to show them your ID. Yeah, you don't have to like it, but you'd better do it. And in this case here, you better just start to practice better use of language because it would help you in the end run. It would make your argument stronger.
People are starting to wake up and see. People are really seeing your prejudice and your biases when you pick and choose who must follow the rules and who you'll let slide. Arrest Christopher Scher. Justice for Patrick. Justice for all black lives. Power to the motherfucking people.
Thank you, your time's up. Your time's up.
Thoughts?
Your time's up.
See what I mean? They just can't help it. They just can't help it. It's all they have. And these people want to be telling you what your teachers should be teaching in school.
I'm Casey Thompson, third ward. You all already know. So I had this idea, right? That I could go and buy this like blazer and this really fancy business suit. And I could get up here and say things like reallocate funds instead of defund the police and stuff like that. I wanted to like, you know, get a lot of hairspray like you, Mayor Bliss. And just like, see if then you can maybe hear me. Maybe if I spoke your language and like put it pretty, then you could hear me, right?
Sounds like a good idea. Why don't you do that? If it gets you what you want. However, it would not work. You're a loser. And if you put yourself in a blazer and you put on the hairspray, you would still look like a loser. They would see right through it. Because it's not just the clothes.
Right? But I got to looking at the suits. They were stiff, they were dry, they looked uncomfortable a lot.
Oh my God, they're uncomfortable, I can't do that.
Not like all of you. And I just didn't want to be that. And at the end of the day, this is what community looks like.
Oh God, if there's any better reason to leave Grand Rapids is for her to say, this is what the community looks like. It looks like a filthy ghetto. Oh man.
This is what it sounds like. This is what your community looks like. With a little sprinkle of rich folk and a couple Saras in the back. But mostly, it's this, so.
Oh yeah, put this on your next welcome to Grand Rapids marketing literature.
I'll present it as it is. And then I'll continue to do that each and every time. And then you guys can continue to sit and look at me like, you know, she came with the sledge, they dropped the F bomb, you know, um, let's get.
Again, the F bomb. They gotta use the F bomb. They can't stop it. That's what really is important to them. Forget Patrick Leoya, they don't care about Patrick. They don't care about police. They don't care about the homeless. They care about the F bomb and the fact that they can't use it. And by the way, if you have tats all up and down your arm, uh, why don't you put on long sleeves? The reason why people might take you a little more seriously. Because after all, the goal is to win, right? Oh wait, no, that's not it. The goal is to throw a tantrum.
Through these two, three minutes and then two weeks from now, we'll do it again. And here comes these people again. No, this is what community looks like. This is your community. This is it.
By the way, don't tell the city council what their community looks like. City councilmen run studies, they know their demographics. They know their constituents. If you were what their constituency looked like, they would pander to you. But they don't. So maybe there are other people in the community that are not like you. Not everybody looks like a meth addict.
So I'm not gonna paint a pretty picture. I'm not gonna say it in.
She got that right.
A way that fits into the policy standard. I'm not gonna come up here with business forum because that's not what your community looks like. That's what the community that you cater to looks like. And it's only this big.
Yeah, but it has a lot of power. The reason why it has a lot of power is because it has a lot of influence. It uses solid reasoning, it uses budgets, it forecasts. It tries to take into account weaknesses and possible barriers. In other words, this small little smidgen of the population thinks deeper than you do. And that's the reason why the city council listens to them more than you.
It's only this big. So what about everybody else? What about us? Because you sit here and you look at us and you smile and you nod and the three minutes end and then you say, all right, all in favor say aye, all in favor say nay. And you give the people tax-free credit. You really just look at us to just get through this time. And this is what your community looks like. I'm so glad that terms are temporary. Terms are temporary. And I just wish that at the end of the day, you could humble yourselves enough to see that we're the same. Anita, I could have done your crochet so much better. It like, it starts back so far, like, we're all average. We're all just average, you're not better. You're not. And when you were blowing kissy faces at me and stuff after I said your daughter is a pedophile last week, like, but you made sure that part didn't show on the live.
I blame meth. For what's, what's taking place now? Uh, yeah, um, the reason why it didn't show up on the live is because it shouldn't. Having a live channel doesn't provide you the opportunity to slander people. All right? And guess what? You're no more persuasive than anybody else that's been up there so far.
It's just insulting. Your attitude is insulting. Your, your expensive fancy cocktails are insulting.
Oh, but she's not insulting. It's the cocktails that are the problem.
I'm a white woman, I could go feed into capitalism. I know how to get that.
Okay, here's another little tip. All right? You're going up to a city council session? Don't rank on capitalism because it makes you sound like a commie. And if you sound like a commie, the city council are gonna tune you out and they should tune you out. So don't mention capitalism. It's, it's just bad optics.
I know how to get this suit. I, I'm an English major, I know.
Oh shit. Last week, I said that being an English major was actually something to be held in high esteem because that's a rigorous subject area. I gotta think about this for a moment. I don't know. Maybe she's an English major at the junior college.
I can do that. But I'll rather take me and mine and liberate somebody and get with the rest of the people and what the community looks like and build it. Do any of you, you just want that stiff suit? Justice for Patrick.
And by the way, she complains about the city council being condescending. But you can't get more condescending than that. Well, maybe you can, we'll find out when the next few people come up.
Others wish to be heard? Hi, welcome.
My name is Gus and I'd like to make a few announcements before I begin. Mayor Bliss.
Gus?
December 2024, John O'Connor, December 2024, Kurt Repert, December 2022, Joseph D. Jones, December 2022, Melinda Yisasi, December 2024, Sanita Lanier, December 2022.
Listing off names and addresses and phone numbers and birth dates and stuff like that is not persuasive. It's a cliche.
Nathaniel Moody, 2024. Remember those names and dates because that's when these soulless, spineless, bootlicking, greedy slugs terms end. It's time for the people to.
Wait a minute, we have to go back through that again, hang on.
24, remember those names and dates because that's when these soulless, spineless, bootlicking, greedy slugs terms end. It's time for the people to be in office, not corporate devos and Van Andel sellouts.
Corporate devos? I'm not sure I caught that one.
It's been a second since I've been to one of these meetings. I would have loved to come to the past few meetings, but watching live streams, it seems like it wouldn't have done anything anyway.
Then why are you here?
Since you all are so incomprehensibly more upset over cuss words than murder by your own police force. I am.
Again, cuss words, every one of them. I gotta do something about this profanity thing. They're not letting us use the F bomb. Oh, by the way, you know, put the cell phone down. Look at the city council and talk to them. It's much, much more persuasive.
So tired, don't say that. They're fine, you're the one disrupting me. I am so tired of these bullshit respectability politics. Why do my peers, my black peers, especially Mayor Bliss, have to bow to you on bended knee and kiss your rings in order for you even to begin to consider them human, worthy of respect? But when they swear or yell or show any sign of what you might deem unruly or disruptive, suddenly you don't see them as people, you see them as threats.
No, she sees them as people who are making comments that are outside the rules. Now, again, I don't know what the actual law is about that. But whatever the case, it's a city council rule, can't use the F bomb. So don't. That's all there is to it. You know? That's the reason why she's hitting the old button whenever she hears the F bomb. Because that's what the rules say.
As threats to you and your ivory towers and golden thrones of power as you sit up there and look down on your noses at us as you interrupt us and silence us. We don't owe you anything. We don't owe you respect. We don't owe you, and I'm sorry, excuse me, please thank you. We don't owe you censorship, we don't.
Did any of them say that you did owe them those things?
Don't owe you compliance. We don't owe you that Michigan nice. We don't owe you anything at all. We don't owe you anything because you work for us. Y'all need to do something drastic because at this point, none of y'all are gonna have jobs. But back to GRPD, since Patrick Leoya's murder, justice for Patrick Leoya. I have only seen GRPD become more and more bold, more brutal, more overkill. Just an hour before this meeting began, GRPD had seven cop cars for what was originally two black activists arrests. Some of our comrades went down to support since, you know, they're both black women and have a significantly higher chance of being brutalized and killed, which led to two more arrests. Seven cop cars for four people. How does that math add up?
Well, let's see here. I don't know because I don't know why the seven cars were there. What, what difference does it make? What difference does it make how many cop cars showed up? Can anybody explain to me what the issue is there?
Seven for four. It seems like every day now, multiple times a day, I get an alert about GRPD advancing on someone with guns drawn, about GRPD tackling people off of a motorcycle and brutalizing them, about.
Did they deserve it? Don't know. If they didn't, then that's what you need to say.
GRPD arresting minors with no parent or guardian present, about GRPD holding kids hostage at gunpoint. All of these events and more have occurred in the past month since Patrick Leoya's death. How is this getting any better? Now, I'm from the boonies, somewhere y'all have never been to, let alone know it existed from out in nowhere, Hicktown Farland. You know why pig farmers cut the tusks off, snip the tails? Because once pigs get a taste of blood, they can't stop. They'll kill and kill and kill until they can't kill.
Thank you, your time's.
Oh my God. I love it. Yeah, this is the left. This is their power of persuasion because they're so intellectually elite.
Time's up. Thank you.
I mean, that's really sick, but.
Okay, your time's up. Thanks. Okay, enough. Enough.
People are pretty angry, huh?
Oh, here's the condescending one. Oh, listen to the tone in her voice. And she thinks this is powerful. She thinks this is gonna get through to the city council and make them shake in their boots.
So there's this thing that happens when a community goes through something like the cops murdering Patrick, what just happened. Um, and that is that a lot of new people who weren't paying attention before get activated, they get jolted out of their apathy. And then they watch things like the city commission meeting and they're like, my word, why is everyone so rude to the city commissioners? How is that going to affect anything? You really need, these people aren't gonna listen to you, not understanding what you all and we all know, which is what has been happening for the last two years. Why don't we talk to you, Rosalyn?
By the way, never take this approach. This is really pathetic. I would rather have a screaming Mimi out there than this. And she's gonna be the first to complain about mansplaining. How, how these men talk down to me. Jeez.
Is it because we've been asking you for two years to stop the GRPD, which you are theoretically in charge of, from beating our friends asses on the streets? That's what we've wanted. So, you know, peaceful protesting and being tackled from behind by bike cops, from having your arm almost broken by city employees. How would y'all feel if at work, right? This is your job. You were being sexually harassed every single month, maybe once a month. And you were going to your boss and you were saying, hey, being sexually harassed by someone you employ, what you gonna do? I think we all know that a company knows they're liable. But I don't think you all know that you have a responsibility to stop your employees from hurting people.
Okay, first of all, the people that are supposed to hurting everybody are not their employees. They're not bosses. They run the city, they make decisions for the city, but the city actually employs them. And so, this whole thing doesn't really work too well. If I was a city councilman, I can't go and fire somebody. It just doesn't work like that.
We got some items up here. Number four. We're supposed to feel like this is a safe space. I don't feel safe. My people don't feel safe. But you will stop us for profanity. You don't actually want.
Another one who can't get over their profanity deal. They're so worked up over it. Oh my God, you taking away their AR-15.
Everyone to feel safe, you wanna feel safe. We don't want you to feel unsafe. But we don't wanna feel unsafe anymore either.
Okay, now let's do things that will make you feel more safe. First of all, don't do crime. Second of all, when the police come, comply. Third, if the police are being unreasonable, file a complaint later. Don't fight them in the streets. Fourth of all, carry a gun. Every one of these people out there who are complaining the streets aren't safe are unarmed. Carry a weapon. But when the cops come and they have a good reason to be there, don't pull it on them. Because the cops wanna feel safe too.
Number five, do not request or expect comment from the commission. While y'all have emphasized that over the last two years real well. Do you know that the first step to healing is feeling like you've been heard? Is feeling like the entity you're talking to, the person you have an grievance with feels like they understand what they've done to you? We do not feel like you as a city body understand what you have done to activists and the BIPOC communities of Grand Rapids.
Tell me what has happened to you. Quit speaking for everybody else. If it's really that bad, then you must have experienced it yourself. Tell us what happened.
And we would just really love it if someone, one of you, just a one. Melinda, I would actually love it to be you. You're the only one I still slightly respect.
Poor Melinda, she's like, oh shit. Hey guys, seriously, I don't know why she respects me. Way to crush Melinda's reputation.
We would just love it if you would acknowledge our pain, what we've been through, the fact that your employees have continuously been hurting our friends. I don't think you would put up with that either. I think you would come up and say fuck the GRPD.
Thank you.
They can't get away from it.
Sorry, give me a sec. My name is Dyson, you guys probably all seen me before. I've come to many of these meetings and I think one thing I've, I've always noticed is that all of you act like politicians and none of you act like activists. If, so I, I remember there was, going, going a little bit back to an incident where a man was punched repeatedly in the face by the Grand Rapids Police Department to the point where Brandon Davis responded on Facebook with a comment that the Office of Oversight had no power to even like really look at the situation, request unedited reports from the police, request like body camera footage and get it immediately. None of those things were within their capability. And you guys all expressed that that had nothing to do with city laws, but everything to do with state laws. And while that, while that may be true, there's nothing you guys can directly do to change those state laws. If I were to go to the governor, like Governor Whitmer, and I were to, and I were to request change in state laws. I'm, I'm just a citizen of Grand Rapids. You are either the mayor, city manager, or city commissioner of Grand Rapids. You guys have a lot more, you guys have a lot, what you guys say has a lot more weight at state levels. So even if, even if you guys don't have direct power over state legislature, none of you guys took the activist standpoint and said, even though we cannot directly affect these laws, we have voices, we have voices of our own and we have power in placements and politic, and political, I guess, standing to make requests.
Now notice something. He is actually making sense. Oh, I don't necessarily agree with his political stance, but he's offering something that the city council can do. He's not going ballistic. He's not getting personal about it. He is saying, look, I mean, I'm not, I'm just a regular guy and, and you have a lot of power though. Why don't you go to the state legislatures and meet with them and talk about some of the changes in the laws that we are demanding? Hey, let's see if he continues on being reasonable.
To the state legislature, and I didn't see any of you guys do that. And that was one of the most disappointing things is that all of you guys here have acted like politicians and I have seen no activists. If, I want, I want activists to be politicians. I want politicians to be activists. They're not two separate things. I, all of, all of you guys here, I have not heard one of you use the word killed or murdered to describe what happened to Patrick Leoya.
Well, you can say kill, but you can't say murdered. You can't. I mean, this is an active investigation. Suppose that it turns out that the state has found that Christopher Scher acted in his rights. And you just went on and called him a murderer? You open up your city for liability. And you can be accused of trying to persuade the state in one of its investigations. That's not good either. And so, you can't say murder. But okay, that's the only thing so far that I've seen him say anything that I have real issues with.
You say police-involved shooting. If you were to just say the words police-involved shooting, maybe the police officers. If you were to just say the words, police involved shooting, maybe the police officer got shot. It's not specific. It doesn't, it doesn't invoke the emotional response that it should, that Christopher Schur executed, shot point blank in the back of the head. Point blank in the back of the head. Okay, any, whatever's lead, whatever's leading up doesn't matter because think about how purposeful point blank in the back of the head is. There is no, there's no way that that can be self-defense. There's no way point blank in the back of the head is self-defense. If you have someone on the ground and you can shoot them point blank in the back of the head, you have already subdued them. Christopher Schur is a murderer and needs to be charged, arrested and locked away and the key needs to be thrown away.
Thank you. Your time's up.
Now.
All right, others who wish to be heard?
All right, so how do we rank this dude's overall presentation? The first half was fine. He offered them things that he wanted them to do and they were reasonable. The second part, he went off on a rant, but at least he kept his emotions under control. He didn't have to use the F-bomb. Did you notice that? And he was still effective? He is the most effective one of all of them. If everybody has been up to that microphone, he probably got through more than anybody else and he was the one person that didn't have to use profanity. So perhaps the rest of the community should have him speak for them because he's done better than anybody else so far. If you put a suit and a tie on him, which makes it look like he really cares about presenting a good, valid argument, that he takes this seriously, he would do even better. And you know what? Maybe he should run for city council. But not those other freaks. They don't need to be up there. They're losers.
My name's Carrie. You've heard from me a few times already. Mayor Bliss, I've met you personally a few years ago when I was one of the board members of the National Association of Women in Construction. And we invited you to come speak to us during Women in Construction Week. And I looked up to you then and I thought that you were progressive and you were, you know, going to make changes here in Grand Rapids. I'm disgusted now also as a previous speaker said. You know, I'll reiterate again. I'm a military veteran.
You're a military veteran? Oh God. Oh God. She was in the military?
I hold a couple of bachelor's degrees. I've been an accountant for over 20 years.
Oh, she was an accountant. Oh my God. Well, that, she's like a commando.
A well-educated woman. I've also been an activist for over 30 years. I lived in LA 30 years ago when Rodney King happened. I was there when the city burnt down and I saw the changes that happened in LAPD after that happened. Sadly, I see that coming to GRPD now.
Oh, a little threat.
Because nothing is being done to change the course of what GRPD is doing. One week ago, I stood up here and spoke when you were not in the room about the previous day, last Monday, when I was sitting by myself at 6:00 PM in Veterans Park at the fountain and a GRPD vehicle chose to drive from Fulton Street on the sidewalk, coming up behind me on the sidewalk and proceeded through the park next to me, back down onto Library Street.
So you have a video recording of this, right? Because you have a cell phone, right? I mean, that's what I would have done. I mean, police car coming up on a sidewalk after me, I think I would have recorded that, but I guess she didn't. Darn.
For no reason, no lights, no sirens. Just an intimidation tactic because they know we're out there at 6:00 PM every single night for Patrick Leoya. Tonight, we got the text message that one vehicle was pulled over with two of our activists in it. I was the second vehicle unseen. My passenger jumped out. She was the third person arrested.
Okay, wait a minute. One of your vehicles got pulled over and you pulled up on the scene and one of your passengers jumped out of your car to the scene? Yeah, you're going to go, you're going to get arrested for that shit.
The next vehicle pulled up. They arrested one of those passengers.
Right, because they didn't stay in their car. They probably tried to get involved. That's against the law. If the officers are engaged with a suspect, you can't intervene. Go ahead and record them. Walk up and just take recordings. Don't communicate. Don't talk to the suspect. Don't talk to the cops. Just record it. But yeah, you intervene now, they'll throw you in jail.
Seven GRPD vehicles sitting there. For three of our vehicles sitting there.
Is there some sort of game out there where you count the vehicles? Well, there were seven cop cars and there were only three of us, which makes them four more evil. Is there such a rule? I don't know.
For no reason, no reason. Nobody resisted. Nobody was doing anything.
Right. Okay. Yeah, I believe you. Not.
It's ridiculous.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Justice for Patrick.
Thank you.
I was in my zone. I was in my zone. I'll be looking forward to the first city commission meeting in 2023 when y'all actually dance so I can get my groove on with y'all. But nah, uh, sub commissioners, what's up city? I want to thank everybody that be out there in the third war, in the trenches, on the southeast side.
I like the fact that he took his headphones off. Very good. Probably should have had them off before he got up to the microphone, but he probably forgot. That's cool.
That walks up to me and.
And probably should take your cap off, but whatever.
Hi, Adrian Mull again. I know we need cops sometimes. Things don't happen on purpose or in any other circumstance.
My name is Nate, resident of Grand Rapids for the last nine years. I want to start by addressing Mayor Bliss's censorship of citizens, stirring public comment at the last two commission meetings, as well as her threats of censorship tonight. Mayor, you have developed a pattern of cutting the mic of speakers who use profanity citing meeting rules that profanity is prohibited.
Good evening. Jesus Christ is king. Not only is he king, but he is the king of kings.
Let him speak.
Hear the word of the living and holy God. In Matthew 28:18, Jesus says of himself, "All authority in heaven and earth has been given to me."
Let him speak. He has a right to be, hold that. Hold that. He has a right to be heard just as much as you do. Let him speak and don't disrupt him.
You see, all of this freedom stuff is a bunch of BS as far as these people are concerned. The power to get in front of, of the microphone and be able to tell your city how you feel, that is so important, except for this guy. The right to voice your opinions and be heard, that's really important. Well, not for this guy. Their true colors are showing through right here.
And heaven and on earth, visible and invisible, whether thrones or dominions or rulers or authorities, all things were created through him and for him, and he is before all things and in him, all things hold together. You see, all the thrones, dominions and rulers and authorities have been given their positions, not for themselves or for the people, but for Jesus Christ. In other words, you are obligated to him. And if someone in higher authority commands you to do anything that would be sin against the God who made you, then you are obligated to obey God.
Yep. When they talk about freedom of speech, they're only talking about it for themselves. So I'll stop it here. You get the picture. And if any of you ever want to get in front of the microphone at a city council meeting, maybe you'll learn something from this video. The major point about it is above all, remember your goal is to be persuasive. You have a bunch of people there who have power to pass certain legislation that affects the city. You want something done. Your job is to persuade them to think more along your lines and there are many ways of doing that. Number one, make it known that you take this seriously. And you can do that by one, dressing nicely, combing your hair, presenting yourself, not wearing baseball caps. Show some respect. You don't see the city councilman, for the most part, getting there, sitting down, wearing jeans and, you know, tank tops and things like that. Dress like them. And all of a sudden, your voice will be magnified. The other one is look for some vocabulary. Calling something morally repugnant is far better than saying that it sucks. Choose your words carefully. Number three, if you have to read it off of your cell phone because you can't remember what you want to say, well, maybe your argument isn't all that good to begin with, but whatever the case, fine. But for the most part, you want to set the microphone down. You want to look at the city councilman and you want to speak to them. Again, it's about making them take you seriously. Number four, don't get up there and say, well, y'all know me by now because I'm here every time causing all kinds of hell. You're just signaling to the city council that they should tune you out right now. Also, number five, or is it number six? I have lost track. Have a real clear message. Most of them had nothing like that. They got up there and I had a lot of faith in you at one time and you're not progressive and, and I think that you guys really suck and all that. If you have a message you want to get across that, for example, Christopher Schur, the officer, should be arrested. Get up there, make that statement and justify it. Here's why. You don't have to use profanity to do that. And number six, understand what the city council can do and what it can't do. The city council can't fire the police officer, not that easily. It's still under investigation. Firing the police officer might have some real issues attached to it. They can't arrest him. It's not that simple. There are procedures to follow. And so if you understand and you constrain your demands to what the city council can do, you have a better chance of getting it across. And if the city council can't, getting up there and telling them what they should do is not going to do any good anyway. You need to go to the actual governing body that can do what you want and speak to them. However, when it comes to a police investigation, you won't get very far with that. At any rate, I thought this was entertaining. If you, if you'd like to see more of this kind of stuff, let me know. I enjoy watching these shows here. I just don't know how you perceive them. Like my videos, subscribe to my channel.